I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, B1, Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. I have several things to share with you this evening while we are pulling up the superintendent's report tonight. I do want to mention to you that we'll give you all the details. We'll go through it in the November board meeting, but as you know, we've been working on the update to the strategic plan, and so as we arrived on safety and security and we had that update internally, we're going, well, we've already met all those goals. And so we're way ahead of schedule. And so, and you know, Dr. Southwick has been encouraging me slash chastising me in this regard that, you know, a lot of times we don't celebrate people enough, and we get so focused on the many things that are going on that we don't celebrate people. So it reminds me tonight, looking at our strategic plan and where we are with safety and security, thank you to John Douglas. And so, John, we so appreciate you being part of the SMSD team. You do a fabulous job, your vision, your passion, and obviously you leading the charge with everybody else on the strategic plan. So thank you very much. Not that you don't put any pressure on them, but John, we appreciate what you bring to us. So thank you.
Would you have thought me to let me point out that I am the best researcher in the second command and the great staff that is under me.
Like every great leader, they always give credit to those that really do the work. I know how that works, John. So thank you, John, for what you do. Let me give you some updates and news from the Shawnee Mission School District tonight. Obviously, some exciting events. Bhavish Denakar, he's a senior at Shawnee Mission East, perfect score on the ACT. On average, less than 1/10th of 1% of all test takers achieve this level of success. So we congratulate Mr. Denakar, his family, whom we know in the Shawnee Mission East community. This is an outstanding accomplishment. Again, perfect score on the ACT, less than 1/10th of 1% of everyone that takes the test achieves this level. So congratulations to this outstanding student and his family as well. Recently, multiple hundreds of students and their families honor Royals baseball game night, attended the Shawnee Mission College Clinic held at Shawnee Mission East. These prospective students were able to obtain information from representatives of more than 200 colleges and universities from around the country. This Thursday, we have a bilingual college fair that will be occurring at Shawnee Mission North. The event will be conducted in Spanish, allowing Spanish-speaking students and their family members a chance to gain more information about local higher education institutions and obtain advice about financial aid and college applications. So again, a part of our effort is the school district to help prepare students for the future. If you have not been to the Shawnee Mission College Clinic at East previously, I would encourage you to do that next year. But over 200 colleges and universities represented a very, very significant endeavor. It's hard to say we're almost in November, but we are. So throughout November, students and employees from across the district will be collecting canned goods and non-perishable foods as part of the We Care, I Can Food Drive. The items collected, as you know, support the Johnson County Christmas Bureau, which helps families in every zip code in the Shawnee Mission School District. So the district-wide effort begins on November 2nd. Again, a great food drive, We Care, I Can. We have a little bit of construction to give you an update on tonight. So, Dr. Southwick.
Yes, we do. And not to go over old hat, but we are still doing a few punch lists on some of our summer projects. The majority of those at this point in time are very small and detailed. We are chasing down some locks and some relays and some key card accesses at some of the buildings. And working with Mr. Robinson and our contractor, we believe that we're very close to that, and by the end of the month, we should have all of that up and running. So that is, it's been a process. As I talked to John Douglas, the sophistication of what he had worked and designed to put together was a little bit greater than what I think most districts would do, but it provides a higher level of safety and opportunity. So we're happy about that. The East Cafe and also the East Field, we believe, will be done close to around November 1st, so we'll get to the end of this week, a little bit past that, both of those projects. We've got a few details at Prairie Village that we've got to work out. The architects are working diligently to get some of those things taken care of, but we'll be open in that cafe and also that field as well. Some exciting news is we have a full permit for Briarwood to move along in construction. We know that that process takes a long time, and we're happy to let you know we have that full permit. And also, a full permit for the Center for Academic Achievement. So been by there. We've got walls up. All of the footings are in for the entire building. We believe we're about three weeks away, three to four weeks away, and you'll begin to see steel be erected. The majority of that building is steel, and we'll have a glass skin on it. So that'll move pretty quick, and it also gives us an opportunity to do a lot of that construction in the wintertime, as long as we don't have snow. So we're not worrying about mortar freezing and those kinds of things when you're erecting steel, so that's good news. We do have partial permits for Trailwood and Crestview that have allowed us to get in. At Crestview, we can run sanitary sewer line, we hope, in the next day or so to complete the process for us to do footings and foundation. And then the next phase of that, obviously, will be the full permit. And we're working diligently with not only Jay Dunn, but the architects, to make sure that there's no lag in work with those. So we didn't have to have the full permit. We're still going through due diligence on some of the requirements that we have, but we are able to work. And the same thing with Trailwood. I think they were supposed to either start today or tomorrow with some construction fence over there, some of the excavation that put in the temporary road, and we'll follow that same process. We've got footings and foundation permit. We're working on the full permit. Another exciting thing to let you know about, on Friday, there is a delegation that will be traveling with our architects and engineers to the University of Missouri. Don't take that wrongly. But they do have one of the premier aquatics facilities, an auditorium in the Midwest. It's quality enough that the SEC does all of their swimming championships there, and I think that speaks volumes. Our goal is to take a team down there. We've reached out not only to Mr. Robinson and Matt Johnson will go. We've reached Lenexa, and we have three members from Johnson County Parks and Rec that will travel with us as well, along with our architects and engineer. We're still waiting for the person or persons that will come from Lenexa, but again, we've reached out to them to have them travel with us. Our goal is to go down there and look at that program and see what it is that everybody has spoken about that is so great, and see what we can do to bring that to the Kansas City area, but more importantly, to the Shawnee Mission School District. We are already having people reach out to us, wanting to know when that venue will open for the possibility to have regional meet. So that's exciting, and I think that we move forward here towards that process and some design collaboration over the next several months, and hope to be able to start that building in the spring. So it's an exciting time. Had a meeting today with Benninghoven principal with our architects, looking at the design of that building, and we planned our schedule to move forward to have the same kinds of meetings with our faculty, with our parents, and also with our community, to inform them of the buildings that we're building. It's my understanding and working with Mr. Robinson and the architects that our conversations with Shawnee have gone well in terms of moving forward to do what needs to be done for those permits. To meet Dr. Henson's challenge, we're going to have a groundbreaking sometime in December. We hope the ground is not too hard and it's not too cold when we do that. But the bidding in the main construction piece of that building will start in the spring. We'll probably bid in like January, February, and then we'll begin the construction in the spring. So it's exciting. A lot of things going on, a lot of maneuvering in the background to make things happen that need to happen. But by and large, we're on track to meet our goal.
Thank you, Dr. Southwick. Also want to share some information to you tonight. We're still in the process of gathering information in relation to TIFs, or Tax Increment Financing. As you know, we are still, right now, at the administrative ranks, working on a draft TIF policy, which is really, it really consists of guidelines. So guidelines for which developers and cities know our expectations, and so that's something that we're still working on as we have numerous conversations with the cities, developers, and other entities within the Shawnee Mission School District. So what we're sharing with you tonight is information we have obtained from the Johnson County Government Services. The first slide that we're going to show you tonight, this is of Johnson County, this map. And we're going to make it a little clearer tonight, and I'm going to fly through the slides because you're going to want to really study this, and so this will be available to you. But if you will notice, obviously, the upper right-hand corner, the Shawnee Mission School District, you'll notice everything that is in red, that would have approved TIF projects, and the blue, which has been presented but isn't yet final, which would be Meadowbrook. So one of the things I want to point out in relation to Johnson County, look at all the red in Johnson County, and then look at the amount or lack thereof in the other school districts within Johnson County. You will notice the Blue Valley School District doesn't have a single TIF. You'll notice a few TIFs in Olathe School District, small one in DeSoto, and then one down in Gardner Edgerton. But the preponderance of TIFs in Johnson County reside within the Shawnee Mission School District. So we'll go to the next slide, and again, we're going to make these available to you. And so the Shawnee Mission School District, so it's a little clearer where our TIFs exist currently. So as you can see, up in Roland Park, you can see there on the border of Mission Fairway, everything there in Merriam, and we're going to break these down, a little larger picture in a minute. But you can see, this is the Shawnee Mission School District. Depending on one or two that may or may not happen, we are between 28 and 30 TIF projects within the Shawnee Mission School District. So what you're seeing are TIF boundaries, not individual projects. So let's go to the next slide, please, Mrs. Wintering. So again, we're going to look at it just very briefly by quadrant, and so this will be the northwest quadrant. You can see there on Flum and also on Shawnee Mission Parkway. We're going to jump on through these relatively quickly. So we'll go to the next slide, the northeast quadrant. You'll notice there in Roland Park, we're going to talk about that tonight. And one of the things that frequently people don't understand, the magnitude, is the city of Merriam and everything that's tipped on I-35. So it's a very large area there in the northeast quadrant of the school district. Okay, we'll go on to the next quadrant, the southwest quadrant. We're in Lenexa. Again, you can see the 435, 87th, 95th, everything that is tipped there in Lenexa. Going to the next quadrant, the southeast quadrant. So the blue is Meadowbrook. You can see the others there that are, that have already been approved, and certainly we have others that will happen there, is to our belief. Moving on to the next slide, the Roland Park. I want to talk about this just a little bit tonight. So the city of Roland Park reached out to us proactively. Currently, they have, you can see how these are numbered, and so the 3A, 3C, the 1B, 1A, 2B, 2D, 2A, and 2C. So what Roland Park is doing is they are really combining these districts, and so what they are doing does not have any impact on the base, doesn't have any impact on the longevity, doesn't have any impact on the increment. So literally, you could call it combining or cleaning up, reorganizing these TIFs. Again, they don't have any change, this doesn't make any change that would have any impact on us. No change to the increment, to the base, to the duration of these at all. It's a lot of paperwork and reorganizing of these multitude of different TIF projects. So, but that's the Roland Park TIF. And so based on that, from my perspective, there isn't any need for us to weigh in because this is not a new TIF district. It is not a new TIF project. It doesn't change anything for us. They're really organizing all of these, so they're a little easier to really follow and monitor in that process. I'm going to pause there.
All in the same maturation schedule, meaning 2024?
They're all the same. A couple of these are in different project timeframes, but they won't change those. So they may have, in what's 3A and 3C, one may come due before the other, but it's not changing that impact on us at all.
Thank you.
But the initial effect on Shawnee Mission was when it was initially created?
When it was initially created, but again, there's no change in that because these are in, already in place.
Yep.
Here's what it looks like. Goes to 1, 2, and 3. Again, it's not changing the boundary or anything else. That all just stays the same, and visually, you can tell it makes a little more sense, the way these are really in place. If the TIF boundary were being changed, that would be a different scenario of detail. The duration, or the index, or the base, that would make a difference, but this is the only change they're making. Again, I'm going to pause on this one. Questions? Any thoughts, concerns? So because of no changes, we won't bring this back to you for consideration unless you have any questions. Okay. These, what you see now is a listing, and again, this listing is from the county appraisers office. This is a partial listing. This is not exhaustive at this point in time, but you can see the location, the project, the effective date, and then the base year. The base year is when those tax bases are created. And again, this is not updated because, again, it doesn't include 91st and Metcalf, 95th and Metcalf, certainly the projection of Brookridge or Meadowbrook. These aren't listed on here whatsoever.
Are they 20-year?
So the, they're planned for 20 years. Certainly, they can pay off early. And so if they pay off early, if the project is collapsed, then they will come on the tax rolls earlier.
So for example, the 1991s, 50th Road, Roland Park, that's what we're talking about right now. So if that was a 20-year TIF, wouldn't that have collapsed by now?
That is when the TIF boundary was created.
Oh, but not the actual effect?
Not necessarily the project. And here's something that people don't understand as well. So when you have a geographical boundary that's created, let's say you have two TIF projects within a boundary. If one of those projects does really well and could pay off early, but the other project is not doing well, you can take the tax capture, if you will, from, let's say, A, and you can use it on B because it's in the TIF boundary. Does that make sense?
But those monies have to be used within that boundary.
They have to be used within the geographical boundary. And again, the reminder, unless the council votes to collapse the TIF boundary, the boundary is permanent. It is forever. Now, again, the governing body can vote to collapse the TIF boundary. The projects have a time limit. The boundary does not unless action is taken by the governing body. Again, that's going to be updated for you through the process. So we're still gathering this information. We'll update the maps for you as well. We'll have more conversation. Again, a part of what we look, some of these are residential TIFs, some are commercial, and so be prepared for more information as we keep you updated in relation to tax increment financing and how it impacts the Shawnee Mission School District. Questions? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Goodburn.
Okay, we will move on to C1, presentation by the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation, Linda Roser. Is she here?
Yeah.
She's here.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Thank you, board. As you all know, Shawnee Mission Education Foundation is proud to partner with you and with our curriculum and instructional leaders to help move the needle for the district to impact students in a positive way. We work in three particular areas, arts, early childhood education, and STEM. So in February of this year, we provided $11,000 to the district to purchase Wacom digital drawing tablets for all the high school art classes. In May, we presented you with $21,000 to help to grow Jump Start. And tonight, we're going to have the trifecta. We're doing STEM tonight. So I'd like Mrs. Goodburn to come down, and this Dr. Ziegler to come up. So we have $25,260 to help with the launch of Project Lead the Way, Launch. Launch is the elementary Project Lead the Way curriculum, and it is being rolled out, I'm speaking for you, Dr. Ziegler, but it's being rolled out across the district over this year and next year in all 33 elementary schools. So we're proud to be a partner with you on that. So for those of you who are keeping track mentally, that's $57,000 so far this year. We still have a couple of months in our fiscal year, so.
Great.
Right.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Okay, C2, Shawnee Mission North High School, Principal Richard Kramer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is Goodburn, Board of Education members, Dr. Henson, Dr. Southwick. I'm here representing our community to say thank you for our wonderful practice facility that's now synthetic turfed. Includes our softball, Nyman, and allows us to still run our track and field events up there for our North Relays. So it's been a real nice shot in the arm for our community, and the excitement of our school to have that facility is really exciting. For not having that before, it has really been wonderful to have, and our kids really appreciate it, our community does, because if you come up, you'll see that it's being used all the time. And also, the addition of the new turf on the district stadium, that's also been beneficial. In fact, we just helped sponsor our band invitational tournament with 14 teams this past weekend, using the field, and the comments and the compliments from the other school districts that were there, it was great. Would have been, I'm very proud to be a member of the Shawnee Mission School District with our facilities. So I took a little opportunity here to make a one-minute, minute-and-a-half video to show you those facilities, if you haven't had an opportunity to get out there and watch.
Oh, why? Please try again.
Sorry.
Pull him away.
Try just back back out and re-hit the link, see if that works.
Yeah, totally close out from the district video and then restart, please. While, we'll see if we can find that video, I'm going to take the opportunity to shift the conversation a little bit and catch you off-guard, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
A bit of conversation in the work session tonight about role models. And I just want to pause, Mr. Kramer, to thank you for being such a great role model, not only for our community, but for our kids. The passion, the love for our community, the zeal, and really the role model that you are for the Shawnee Mission School District. I want to celebrate who you are tonight, the example that you set for so many in the district. You're a marvelous educator, and we are thrilled and honored in the Shawnee Mission School District for you to be leading North High School. And so we're going to just pause and say thank you, celebrate you tonight for doing such a phenomenal, phenomenal job every single day for the kids at Shawnee Mission North. So thank you, sir. Not sure we're going to make the video happen. Any questions for Mr. Kramer at all?
Brad's, Brad got kicked out.
Brad got, okay.
I'll tell you what, I will send you the link, and you can watch it yourselves at your, please.
And the call letters at the beginning is at North High School?
Okay, Indiana, that's our radio and television.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
All right, we're going to pause. This is a video, I understand, probably that's worth watching.
Oh, yeah.
And so we're going to make sure we try to see this tonight, so.
Is that a drone shot?
Yes.
Is that look down here?
At the proper altitude. Thank you, Dr. Southwick.
Yes, we followed all the.
Do you see Al with on this thing?
Yes.
I'm not seeing it.
All right, well, we'll send you the link so everybody can watch it. We'll post it on the website as well. So thank you, Mr. Kramer, very, very much.
Okay, we move on to D1, open forum. Do we have anyone tonight? No? Okay, pass it then. So we're on to E1, which are the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of September 28, 2015.
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Ms. Bisfield. Any discussion? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Right, first time.
Nope. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Okay, approval of the minutes from the special meeting of October 7th.
I would move approval of special meeting for October 7th.
Second. Second. Okay, Ms. Seela, thank you, Ms. Seela. Thank you, Ms. Neber. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, on to the adoption of the agenda, F1. I would take a motion.
Move for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Neber.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. On to G1, which is the approval of routine business by consent.
I would move approval of routine business by consent.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Neber. Thank you, Ms. Seela. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, so that moves us.
Q1.
Down to Q1. Action by the superintendent, Q1, Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. You have three board policies before you tonight. The first one is in relation to the annual operational budget. It strikes a sentence under hearings and reviews. The annual budget hearing shall be held prior to August 15 of a given fiscal year. That is being removed because that is statute, and it's requirement now. And so, as you know, we've been working at KSBE, and if it's in statute, try not to put it in policy, because when the law change, changes, that means we don't have to go back and change the policy as well. Doesn't change anything for us operationally. The addition is in relation to budget transparency, and so this is something that's been asked of us, but it's something we do, so it isn't a change for us in operations at all. It just specifically contains it in board policy under budget transparency. Those are the changes to the annual operating budget policy.
Is that why we don't have to have a first reading? Because there's no actual change, or?
We don't have to have a first reading by policy at all.
Okay.
Move approval of revised board policy, DC.
Thank you, Ms. Bisfield.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Seela. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Q2, sorry.
Thank you. On the use of school vehicles, the change here is in relation to really two primary things. One, the licensing of drivers is reported to the superintendent or designee. So you know there are a lot of things that happen here that I'm not directly involved in, and so the superintendent or designee in policy. And also, the transportation of summer athletic events. So we had an option of either one or two, and in this case, transportation of summer athletic events, the board authorizes the superintendent or designee to provide the use of school buses or other vehicles during the summer. This has been our practice, but it's officially in policy now. So it doesn't change anything at all that we're doing operationally.
Move approval of Q2.
Thank you, Ms. Neber.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stratten. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
And board policy, JCDB be in relation to weapons. This is a KSB recommendation. So instead of just possession of a weapon at schools, possession of, handling and/or transmitting. And instead of just weapon, or it's weapon. possession of handling and/or transmitting, and instead of just weapon, or it's weapon or destructive device, that's included in the policy, and then something that is required of us now, you'll see that on the next to the last paragraph, "Students violating this policy shall be reported to the appropriate law enforcement agencies, and if a juvenile to the Secretary for DCF or the Secretary of KDOC, Kansas Department of Corrections, as appropriate." So, that's a requirement that we have to follow, and so that's added to our board policy. Again, doesn't change any of our procedures or things that we do operationally at all.
I would move approval of revised board policy, JCDBB.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Seela. Thank you, Ms. Bisfield. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, on to action, Board of Education, election of delegate to the KASB convention. Ms. Mack?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Deb Zila as our delegate to the KASB convention.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Okay, any discussion? Are you okay with this?
I'm okay with this.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Wonderful. Okay, all those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Seela, for doing this for us. Appreciate you doing that, attending the convention.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. On to S1, reports of the board, the board financial report.
The financial report, obviously, we are always a month behind, so it's the month of September. Nothing is unexpected here, and so we're right on target. But I want to take this opportunity to say to you, we will continue to carefully monitor the state revenue in relation to what impact that may have upon us as a school district. We don't know anything officially. There is speculation about whether there will be some type of a withholding during this fiscal year for us from the state. Again, we don't have any definitive information at all, but it is something that we will continue to monitor very, very carefully. The question becomes, will the state have the revenue to fund the budget that has been appropriated? And that's in question right now. And so, right now, we're on target for where we should be the first three months of the fiscal year as far as revenues. That could change, so we'll monitor that very carefully and see what that looks like for the future. Obviously, we trust it doesn't, the state would have the ability to fund, but we don't know if that is accurate at this point in time, based on the information that currently is occurring with the state. Been happy to answer any questions about that issue. Okay, thank you.
Okay, T1, which is comments from board members.
Mrs. Mack? This past week, I put in your mailboxes information for MV Prime. I went to a meeting this past, was it last week? I guess it was last week. Dr. Dennis, Dr. Athet, and Dr. Neal were all in attendance, and it's a pilot program, a volunteer program, so I wanted to make sure that you got that information. It is in its infancy at this point in time, there's nothing really to report, but it's a pilot program that a lot of people have been working very hard on for a long time. So, I wanted to say thank you to them for their work on this.
Anybody else? I had a couple of things that I wanted to say. State tennis, East, the girls won, didn't they? Did they not, or get second? Yeah, I thought that was wonderful. And also, North's cross-country teams, if you haven't been following that, it's very exciting. They've won districts, regionals, both boys and girls teams, and I don't remember exactly when the last time they won a state title in that, or if they ever have.
The girls never have.
No, the girls never have. So, it's very exciting, and the meet is, state meet is this Saturday in Lawrence at Rimrock Farm. So, it's a very, very exciting time for North Cross Country. I wanted to say also that I attended conferences, actually, at two high schools last week, since Cory takes a couple of classes in the morning over at Northwest, and it was just wonderful to see all the students, all the parents and students participating in those conferences. They're open conferences on Wednesday night, and so the teachers are all sitting around at desks and in the gymnasiums or the MPRs or wherever, and both North and Northwest looked very similar, and it was very neat to see all the, all the parents there and engaging with the teachers. So, it was really, it was an exciting time. And I wanted to say about homecomings, I had the pleasure of writing in South's homecoming. There, and a lot of us have been able to participate in the homecoming parades over the last couple of months, except for North, which was canceled due to rain, but I thought that was, it's really neat, they're celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, and they have, that was just really kind of the kickoff, I think, to the year celebration, and they have all sorts of different activities planned. And actually, I graduated from South, and some of my classmates actually went back to the game that night, which was really neat. I was unable to go, but it was really neat that they were there, and they had a great time celebrating along with the school, so. And there's different activities involved this year, so, anyway, it's neat. That's all I wanted to say. Anybody else? Nope. We are adjourned, then. Thank you, everyone.
Did you get your [inaudible]? [inaudible].[1747.51]